Person meeting since February 2020. We, I think all would have preferred to continue to have the option to continue by Zoom. But the state law doesn't allow that, so we must meet in person. We meet in the town courthouse and thus we are complying with their requirements. So at least for now, everyone must remain masked unless speaking. And we are streaming this to YouTube, so it can be observed by members of the public. We do have mics here, so if people are having trouble hearing us, we can take a break and put the batteries in the microphones. So let us know if you can't hear. But I think with the noise level that I'm hearing now, I think we're going to proceed as we are. So joining me tonight, Charlene Delacato and Jerome Kerner. We do have three members, thus we have a forum and we can conduct the business of the board. Also with us, Planning and Wetland Consultant Jan Johansson and Councilman Judge Seibert and the Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad. So we do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. Therefore, we do not expect to take any public comments at this meeting. But I do want the members of the public to know they can always express their views by mail or by email to planning@louisburg.gov.com. Okay, so with that, let's get started. First item on, oh, I'm so not used to it. The exits for an emergency are out that door or the way you came in. And restrooms are in the main hallway along there. And I think that's all the house can have to do. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a decision. Calendar number 03-21 PB Cameron's Deli Expansion 890 Route 35, Cross River, New York. And this is an application for a change of use in the building that is on that Route 35.
Everyone. Hi.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Michael Manager. I'm the architect for the change of use at Cameron's Deli. Last time we met, there was discussion about upgrading the outdoor seating with a review with ACARC. So as of last week, we had the presentation, everything was approved. So we are here. We've updated the outdoor seating. We're including six new tables, some new planters. Also based off the planning comments, we've updated the drawings for the ADA parking and everything else outside signage exits are remaining the same.
Good. So when you say you updated the parking, that's in accordance with the Building Inspector letter and directions there, right?
Yeah, the ADA parking spaces, yeah, with the parking aisles.
Okay. We do have a resolution that has been circulated to our members, but Jan, perhaps you want to hit the highlights? Unless anybody else has any comments or questions? Yes.
Jan, I wonder if you reviewed the outdoor seating details and...
These details, I don't believe were included in the planning board submission. I haven't seen those. We have some prior comments that have become conditions of the resolution that ask for details about the surface material and a cross-section detail for that. You know, the tables and chairs are really
Yeah.
ACARC's purview, but from what I understood, the surface material, the patio itself was going to be upgraded. And we asked for a detail for that. The last site plan that I saw showed three new accessible parking spaces, but the access aisle between the spaces was shown at five feet.
Yeah, I've updated it to eight.
Did you end up losing a parking space?
Well, we're going to be, there was, there's a curb cut there. They're probably going to end up eating into the lawn a little bit to gain all that parking spaces.
It looked to me, and that's, that's an option. But that modification hasn't been seen by the board. So if you're actually proposing to expand the parking lot, we haven't seen that. I think that you have sufficient parking there from a zoning perspective that you could potentially lose a parking space to accommodate the larger access aisle. And that's how the resolution's been written, with the understanding that you could lose one, almost two parking spaces.
Sure, so that would be the...
So I think that would be the preferred approach.
Okay.
Because I'm not dealing with actually physically expanding anything.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that, and we asked that, you know, if you have the edge of the parking lot and you have a little asphalt walkway, then you have a wooden guide rail in front of Cameron's that runs parallel to the parking spaces. The signage for the accessible parking spaces, we just recommended that it be placed immediately adjacent to the wooden guide rail. Be out of the way from plowing, won't get damaged. So there's a couple like minor details like that that have been incorporated into the resolution. I haven't been able to, it's a change of use application that has triggered site development plan approval. Given the type of activity that's proposed at method qualifications or thresholds for waiver of site development plan procedures. Subject property is 1.46 acres. It's located at 890 Route 35 in the Harvey Zoning District. It's developed with a two-story mixed-use building, a few storefronts on ground level. The second floor is unfinished. The application involves the existing deli, which is known as Cameron's Deli. And they're proposing to expand into the existing or former physical therapy space, which is immediately adjacent. That triggered the site, the change of use, going from physical therapy to retail. The app is also proposing to construct a accessible bathroom within the space. Is improving the existing outdoor seating area, is installing three accessible parking spaces. The resolution makes reference to the business plan that's been submitted by Cameron's Deli. Subject property contains 64 parking spaces. There's a whereas clause that kind of speaks to what I just discussed, that there could be the potential elimination of one to two parking spaces to accommodate the proper access aisle widths of those accessible parking spaces. And that the board still finds that even with that loss of two, potentially two parking spaces, that there'd be sufficient parking to accommodate the existing and proposed use. There's a whereas clause that talks about the second, or the existing second floor to remain unfinished unless otherwise approved by the planning board. So if that space were to be outfitted, it would need to come back to the planning board. There was a referral made to Westchester County Planning Board according to Section 239M of the General Municipal Law because of the proximity to a state road. And the resolution makes reference to Building Inspector's review memo dated July 13. The rest of the resolution is pretty pro forma. There are some conditions to be satisfied prior to the signing of the site plan, which includes addressing some of the things we just spoke about, the access aisles, some details for the outdoor seating area, attainment of any outside agency approvals. It lists two, the Health Department and ACARC. ACARC has since been approved since the drafting of this resolution, so that automatically satisfied. The only outside agency approval is the Health Department relative to the change of use permit. I know that you had submitted some calculations or reporting on the water, but there's actually, you know, a permit for the change of use that the Health Department has. Other than that, standard conditions.
Okay, does any...
Make a motion that we approve the resolution as drafted.
Any further discussion? Okay, bottom of paper?
Aye. Just with one, I'm sorry.
Yes.
There was one typo on the second page, the second whereas talks about the notification referral to the county planning board. It says a notification-only referrals was made. It should be, it's not plural. Kirsten just wants to strike the S referrals, making notes. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. The second item on our agenda tonight is the, thank you very much, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Second item on our agenda tonight is the calendar number 01-15 PB, calendar number 25-15 WP, calendar number 06-15 SW. This is the Copia Garden Center, 475 Smithville Road, South Salem, New York. And then application for a skip plan review, site development plan for unfinished improvements to the existing Copia Garden Center and the expansion of the existing use onto the adjacent tax parcel.
Good evening, Michael Serignano. Good to see you all in person. I'm here tonight for Copia Home and Garden Center. It's a business, as you know, run by Peter and Jennifer Cipriano. They were, they have recently been traveling through multiple states and just got back and they just didn't feel comfortable coming to a public meeting for everyone else's safety. So I ask you to please excuse their, their presence tonight.
Appreciated, actually.
Yes, you remember back in 2015, 16, and 17, Peter and Jen proposed various improvements to their garden center, which ultimately were approved. Regrettably, those approvals lapsed and so we refiled with your board to have the prior approved improvements reaproved. You've done, you did a sidewalk, I guess, back in the spring. And you asked us to produce or provide additional information concerning the prior approvals and clarify some other issues. And I think Jan also asked us for some additional information. And so I have David Coffin here, the project architect. He'll just describe what his latest submission to your board is, and then we can talk about how to go forward. I see there is a rather lengthy letter from your building inspector, as well as Jan's memo.
Thank you, Michael. My name is David Coffin, Sommel Studio Architecture. And as Michael said, I was the architect during this entire process. So what was submitted, I should say resubmitted, are all of the drawings that had been approved under the various resolutions. However, the main or primary site plan has been annotated with all of the issues that were raised by Jan in terms of the work that needed to be completed. So what I've done, and I know that you have received some copies, you know, of the drawing, so that I outline all of the work that remains open or has been completed and then specifically responded to Calhoun Sessions memorandum. And other than that, I can just respond to any questions that you might have.
Yes, thank you. I thought it was helpful to see those, those highlights, especially since some of us were not on the board back when this all first happened. So thank you very much. I appreciate that piece. I think, I think one of the things that actually sort of comes up is that the building inspector letter does seem to me that it requires some changes to what you've not made that. So I don't know whether it's more useful to go through that or to maybe say, you know, we, we expect to see some, some response in some way to the building inspector's letter. I think some of it is not that big. I mean, maybe getting a couple more accessible parking spaces and so forth. You know, I'm not sure what the owner thinks about racks. I mean, so there's some, there's some things there that I think are, are probably requiring, you know, something more than going through what we've currently got.
Sure.
I, I think that's entirely correct. There are some issues here that I have to take up with the building inspector and maybe Judge. But there are some planning issues that I'd like to seek your input on tonight. For instance, the number, number two, the sections of chain link fence and plants for sale. I'm reading from the building inspector's letter. There are sections of chain link fence and plants for sale located outside the applicant's property lines along Smithville Road and East Street. Peter and Jen are prepared to, to remove. Well, most of the chain link fence is already there. There is a few, one section at the corner, correct?
Right in here.
Yeah.
And has to be removed.
And if, if your, if your board wants us to take that away, we'll, we're happy to do that.
That's a mistake right of way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
I don't, I don't know that we have authority to allow.
Well, it's been there, so.
Yeah, but that's...
I'd just like to say that it's endemic of what I consider to be an over-aggressive use of the site. You can't argue with success, mate. Peter, they're doing a great job. They're an asset to the town in terms of all that stuff. But it does make the site a little difficult to maneuver in and to work with. So even the day that we were there, granted, it was spring, the peak of the material coming in and the, and customers still coming there, but it was, you could see how difficult it was to maneuver around that site. And encroaching on the right of way, and I think on town property on the, on the East Street side. And also the question of the storage racks where this parking shown. And I think that's one of the items in the building inspector's letter, where he talks about the crass need for a buffer, which I think is...
The storage racks were never part of the approval, so they either have to get reintroduced as part of the project to get approved by the board, that too.
But, but again, it's indicative of an aggressive use of the site above and beyond what was...
I might use it more than aggressive. During, you came on the sidewalk the busiest time of year, so it was pretty hectic out there behind of the spring season.
Yeah, but I, I think that's what you have to design for. You can't design for the winter when they're shut. And design in the heat period when there's the most activity. And I think that wasn't done. Now, the racks that you're talking about, is that in this area right here?
Yeah. Northern property lines.
Yeah.
Up here?
Yeah, that's where, that's where.
Yeah, they were in the building inspector's...
The northern property.
So they say...
Okay, right in this area, right here. Yeah, yeah.
It's also supposed to be like accessible around... Isn't this supposed to be open here?
It is open, yes.
So, I mean, that, yeah, go ahead, Sharon.
I wasn't here during 2016, so I have two questions. I don't understand why Lot 33 is not being addressed because they have stuff over there, they store stuff over there, right? And where are they going to store that if they're not allowed to? Or when are they going to apply, allow for it? And I mean, part of the whole, you can't segment it. And that's, that's... No, that's one of them. The other thing is the circulation. Maybe it's because the storage racks are there, maybe because it was a busy day, but the circulation was not quite what it should be.
Charlene, just regarding to Lot 33, I think that what was approved at that time was a personal garden, vegetable garden in that area, which got morphed into a commercial storage and plant material. And, you know, like, you can't put five pounds in one pound bag unless you...
But I think it should be addressed. My opinion that it should be addressed in this site plan.
It has to be. You can't knowingly approve a site plan in this... Right, so it either has to be removed or you have to petition the town board to rezon the property. I don't see those two choices.
There's a third, which is an add district designation, so we're looking into that as well. I, I see this, that particular issue, and it has to be addressed. But I see that as a zoning issue that I need to take up with the building inspector or Judge. I think our site plan is for the property we own. We don't own 33. There's a, there's a lease arrangement there and that... You know, I respectfully disagree that we have to incorporate those lines into this site plan.
Michael, it's part of your original approval. And then you were, you produced a lease agreement with that owner that you're supposed to. I haven't seen it. That's one of our comments. So it was part of the original site plan. I don't see how this board can approve a plan when there's this, this illegal use of space.
Well, unless you modify the site plan and eliminate that.
Well, that's what I, I only see two choices. The add, I don't know how you possibly get the add because it's for commercial enterprise, but I'll let you go after that. But it's either it gets removed and it's compliant, or you, you get that parcel zoned to allow use.
Well, we're prepared to fence it off so that there's no interior connecting path or access between the two.
But what, right now they're accessing through Vista Market, all the truck, all this truck material. They back the trucks up through Vista Market parcel and they unload on that parcel. Seen it a dozen times.
Well, it's genuinely a zoning issue, no question about that. I, I see it a little differently than you, but I'll deal with it. The building inspector and Judge will come back to you.
Yeah, I, I think you're hearing, and I'm, I'm sort of speaking to the, the board now, that we're unwilling to not include something, some resolution on 33 as part of this, as part of looking at this. So, so, okay. I, so I think, I think that's my, you've heard the comments here. I think the, the message, I mean, the building inspector memo had things in it that I don't think we anticipated. And I think it's really important for Jan to be invited onto the site to be able to do his site inspection and give us some comments that, you know, might be very relevant to this, to our discussion.
I've asked them for site inspections, boss.
Right, so I think, I think to kind of move forward, that aspect of this.
Just waiting for the phone call.
Okay, so I don't know that there's, I mean...
Do you have any other questions about, you know, for example, the, the comment about the, the parking spaces?
I think, you know, I think these other pieces are so, are so apt to change what is currently designed, or maybe or maybe not. I mean, but that, but I think, I'm not sure I really want to spend a lot of time going through the details because I think, I expect things to change. But no, I thought, I thought, I guess I would say that it was very helpful to see it all. I did understand now, as someone coming new to this, I did understand what, what had been done and was, what was left to be done. So that was really helpful, but, but I, I sort of anticipate that things might continue to change because of the needs in the building inspector letter.
We didn't have any comments on the plans. We did a great job doing exactly what we asked you to do.
Yeah.
We brought up, as, as the building inspector did, to use a lot 33. I do absolutely think that's part of this application, needs to be addressed in one way or the other now. And then there was two conditions of the original approval. The license agreement with the town of Louisville, the plant, the planting in the town right of way on East Street. And then the lease agreement between you and Vista Market for use of property for the private garden. Those were conditions of the original approval. I don't have, I didn't readily have them. I would imagine they were originally submitted, I have copies of them. And, you know, this matters more complicated because we have an active application for the Vista Market at the same time. So you got to figure out how you're going to use that property, one way or the other. And that's, in my opinion, has to be done during the planning process now.
I think, I, I think that's the sense of the board as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but again, you did exactly what we asked you to do and it was, it was really helpful and it was very clear. And I, I didn't have questions on that. But, you know, I got the building inspector letter and that sort of generated some questions.
Well, I know, he, he did speak with me prior to initiating the letter, so.
So I don't know if you can, you know, our next meeting is August 17th and the submission date is July 27th, which doesn't give you a lot of time. So, okay, so that is, that's the next...
I think we'll see you in September.
Okay. Um, because, because I think you've heard, we sort of need this stuff to move further forward.
Well, I think a site visit would be very helpful because then we can iron out any of the details that...
So if you could take the message back to the owners to say, give Jan a call, that'd be great.
For the record, you were invited when they did the sidewalk, I think you were out of town. So it's not like we're...
No, yeah, I asked for a specific site visit with our office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number 04-19 PB, calendar number 17-19 WP, calendar number 06-19 SW. This is Poundridge Stone at 2 West Road in South Salem, New York. It's an application for some upgrades to the site, including additional parking and storage area. This has been here for good. I think we declared ourselves lead agency in November of 2019, so that, that continues. And I understand that Poundridge Stone went to the CBA in May.
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Michael Serignano. I'm with Joe Reader, the project architect. And that's correct, we, we went before the zoning board and we have a resolution from then dated May 26, May 26, 2021, granting the several variances that this proposed site plan requires in the opinion of the building inspector. And so we're now back to your board. Joe tells me before I was involved in the project that your board walked this site, so... We're happy to answer any questions. Joe can present any new material. And I'd like to talk about the possibility of getting to a public hearing schedule. Danny Morgan is here with us. The proprietor is happy to answer any questions as well. I, I think the site is going to be much improved visually and functionally with Joe's site plan in place and built out. So we're looking forward to moving forward.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi. So since the last time you saw the, the site plan, the only substantive changes that we've made, we've clarified the comparison of existing to proposed impervious surfaces. We've designated, you know, as you know, we were struggling with trying to find one-to-one mitigation for the, for the buffer intrusion of the project. We are suggesting that we... So we're suggesting that in the area that we've highlighted in orange here, that we put a plan in place to remove the basic species through some selective clearing and clear dead litter, dead vegetative litter that might be throughout that area, maybe add some additional plantings in that area.
Joe, could you, before you go further, could you just orient us to... Joe, could you, before you go further, could you just orient us to one twenty-three?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, one twenty-three is out here, is West Row. Okay, all right, here's the entrance to the site here.
Right.
All right, so this is a back end on West Row. Here's where the storage. So we've, we're proposing that, Yan had commented on that, we're going to provide some additional details on that. Additionally, we had to clean up some of the details on the signage. The billing inspector wanted some more dimensions and whatnot on the signage, so it was clear to the zoning board what they were looking at. And that's about it as far as substantive changes. We did slide the storage building, maybe five feet or so further away from the popping line, but I think we may have made that change the last time you saw the plan. Otherwise, everything else is pretty, is basically what you had seen the last time.
So Yan, I know you have a memo.
Yeah, they're pretty minor comments, housekeeping really. I just wanted to make sure that the, I didn't see a ratio of disturbance to the mitigation area, so I just want to make sure that the area in orange is equal or greater to the area of buffer disturbance.
Yeah, I don't think it is, and I don't think we're going to be able to reach that. So we're going to have to somehow supplement that possibly with what we do in this area, but.
It looked, I mean, it doesn't look deaf far off.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could just have a clear representation of what the ratio is. I agree that there's not much else that we could potentially do for mitigation. That's the open portion of the property.
Right.
They're not including stormwater, their stormwater practices is part of the infiltration, so. And that stormwater is not necessarily required for the state guidelines, because you're outside the watershed. So maybe there's a little play there that could be done, but I think the mitigation plan is appropriate. I've asked for a couple of details about the invasive species removal, what they're targeting, how it's going to be removed. The rest of it is, my memo is, is housekeeping. We've been through this plan a number of times, our technical comments have long been satisfied.
We should see what the ratio is anyway, I mean.
Yeah, that has to be quantified and, you know.
We'll get that out there.
And Yan notes that we need referrals to ECCAR and to Westchester County Planning Board.
County Planning Board, we'll have to see that, might.
Been done, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I have to look it up.
I kind of remember that it was, but then again.
It could have been in the prior.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so that we do by consensus, so I guess I would look for consensus to refer this to ECCAR, and if it hasn't already been done to the Westchester County Planning Board, to send it to them, so. Okay, so we're all together on that, so that will happen.
What about a date for a public hearing?
So Yan, are you?
Fine by me, no issues.
Okay, so I think.
No, that's consensus.
Yeah, consensus, but, so I think it would help if we could get that, the quantification of the ratio before that, okay. So, public hearing, can you get it ready for August seventeenth? Do we think, I mean, this would be our first attempt to get a public hearing in the new world, but yes.
The man should go on August second? Doable?
Yes.
Okay.
Would the board like a draft?
Resolution? I. I think so, I don't know that there's anything here that would, it would be, it would be great to see this, you know, done. I think your memo, the last memo was twenty nineteen, and I was looking at it going, okay, it's pretty similar. So let's see if we can get this, this done, that would be really helpful.
Yan, I assume the approvals by DOT and the Westboro Highway Superintendent would be conditions of the approval?
Yeah, I mean, the town highway superintendent's been active in the application. I know that he's endorsed the driveway location. And the DOT is, you know, you're closing that entrance off, and it's remediation, so.
We've already received comments from them, and we've addressed them. And to be honest with you, I can't recall if we've resubmitted that or not to them, but we've already received some comments.
The work in the state right away is.
Pretty, so they'll be happy we're pulling away from, out of their right of.
Yeah.
Is there any, I'm just wondering, since that is closing that off, is there any opportunity to do, I'm not sure it would really count as mitigation, but, you know, any kind of landscaping there that might, might help?
Why not?
I, I mean, I, I think if we're scratching for a few square feet.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we would have, certainly then have to include that in our DOT permit.
They have to review the landscape, opposing the state right away.
Because it would be in the state right of way?
Yeah.
It becomes a little complicated.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, making it more complex than it's worth, I just thought maybe there was an opportunity there for.
And their development is right up to the property.
Yeah, we're right, we're right.
Right on the property line, okay, sorry, I just, it just occurred to me that maybe there was a bonus there.
Good, good thought.
Don't want to make it any more complex, we're.
I mean, there's other, they're doing a lot of other things that are beneficial to the environment, right? They're doing the stormwater, they have impervious surface on a lot of the parking lot.
Right.
So, you know.
I think we can find.
Not that they're doing a hundred percent in planting, but there's incorporated into the design a lot of beneficial.
Beneficial.
Steel building is new construction, correct?
That's the only new.
Is that a steel building?
It's, it's going to be a wood frame, right? It's going to be a wood frame, or?
Not sure yet.
Okay.
It's concrete foundation slab, so this is from concrete up, either wood or steel.
We did submit architectural plans on that.
Did you, is it pitch roof or?
It's a, it's a pitch roof, right?
Yes, it's a pitch roof, you know, it's a barn style. We did, we did, I don't have it with me, but we did submit that early on, early on.
I will show.
Yeah.
Well, one thing we've never discussed here is mitigation might be some other sustainable feature, you know, within the, within the new structure. It's something we, I don't know if it's within our purview, you know, but to consider that as mitigation.
Rain barrels at the bottom of the, I don't know.
They're taking.
They're going to actually treat it, yeah.
Yeah, stormwater system.
And a green roof doesn't work on a pitch, I don't, I don't think it's.
We can discuss that.
Yeah, I don't know.
We are enclosing, containing storage of materials, which until now hasn't been the case, so that's another approval.
You know, that's, that's a significant step, yeah. You know, to prevent spillage.
Yeah.
I'd say that should be.
All in all, it's, you know, much better off with the proposed condition than the existing.
Sure.
Okay.
Right, so I know we've been to the site, do you feel a need to go to the site or drive past or anything? Okay, I'll drive this on my own. Okay. All right, so.
Buy some sculpture.
Rocks. If we, so I think we've kind of got, we've got the referral, we've got a public hearing set, anything else we need to do tonight? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the.
Good night.
Good night. Is the TruStale Lake Property Owners Association, the Hoyt Street Paper Road. This is an application for a lotline change, and I don't know if anyone is here for this. The major, I don't know if I should talk about it, we got a letter from the building inspector, and I think that's really what we wanted to discuss. The, the purpose that this would be going for is to have a lotline change that would allow a doc to go on it. And the building inspector's letter is pretty clear that a doc is not allowed on that. So just wanted to notify the applicant, and that was the purpose of this, so.
And the applicant did make a request to.
To have it adjourned.
Yes, but I think expects to attend. My impression of the adjournment was they're looking for August.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, so this remained on, I think that's the only thing we really had. Okay, the next item on the agenda, so moving along, wetland permit review for calendar number forty-nine dash twenty-one WP. This is for the Healy Polo Chick residence, I hope I said that right. Ninety-six Lockwood Road, South Salem, New York, an application to, for an addition to an existing single-family house.
Good evening, my name's William O'Neil, I represent the owners. Mr. Healy can't be here, Barbara's right there. He was in rehab, he just had a knee replaced, so he would be here if he could.
Yeah, a few weeks now.
Can I take this on?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's wonderful what they can do.
Yes, although it's difficult, I sympathize a hundred percent.
He's in the middle of the difficult part right now.
Yeah, I'm at the, still at the difficult part, okay, anyway.
So, the proposal is to add to this, here's the house, here the street is here. We have wetlands, wetlands and wetland buffer on the entire property. But what's, this is wetland, but this is their backyard, and I have pictures I can show you, and I, I think if you go out there, you'll see that, you know, it's lawn, and it is technically wetlands, but it's lawn. We're adding a bedroom here, we're making this a den, so we're not adding the total number of bedrooms. I know that the, with some concerns to whether we're going to have to go back to the health department, but no, because we're not going to change the number of bedrooms. So we'll make sure that this no longer counts as a bedroom. And then, so we have a new bedroom here, it's, it's got, it's a suite, it's for Barbara's mother. And, but that's over the area that's currently driveway outside the garage. We will extend that garage out, and as a result, we need to add some pavement here, but we're going to be taking away pavement here in amounts approximately equal. And we can, you know, massage that to be exactly equal, or a little bit more as we get out and lay it out in detail. But that's, that's the proposal, there's, none of the new building area is over undisturbed soil, but this area is, this is currently in the wetland buffer, and in order to have enough room to pull out of the garage, we're going to need to take more pavement here. But again, right now the pavement, there's a retaining wall here, and pavement in this area, and we'll take that pavement out.
Okay, so I was a little confused at first, because I didn't see lines that sort of indicated how, you know, how to get the garage underneath, but it's already an exposed basement, it already is.
There is already a garage there, right?
Okay, so you're basically going to move that out, then the first floor is going to have the new bedroom area in it?
Yes.
Is there currently a second floor on the house?
Yes, it's a, it's a kind of a cave, hold on, I have a whole bunch of.
Okay, and is that going to extend over that?
No.
Okay, that's, that was my question. So it's basically just the garage goes under as the sort of foundation, and then the bedroom, and then this.
Yeah, it's a, it's a one-story addition at that point.
Okay.
So, yeah, a garage, but one, one story construction, so here, I didn't draw the second floor plan, but this is the.
The footprint.
The demolition plan is what we're taking out, and this shows the work added here.
And there is no second.
There is no, no work on the second floor.
What is the existing garage, is that stored?
Yeah, it's, it's become part of the basement.
Part of the basement.
Basement storage.
So going to the Department of Health, I thought, I understand you're avoiding it by not having a, not having a new bedroom, is there, is there a thousand square foot limit?
There's, there's really no, unless the building inspector required it, there's no need to go to the health department, given the presentation of floor plans.
The determination of number of, of the size of the subject system is based on the number of bedrooms, as long as we're not changing the number of bedrooms.
Addition is under a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
It's under a thousand, yeah, okay, so what do you think?
I'll just point out that there's, I don't know if you hit on it, but there's a shed that's proposed, right?
Yes, there's, there's an existing shed that's coming down, and a new shed. And this is the approximate location of that shed, we know what the setbacks are. We have, the shed's been ordered, but it hasn't been installed.
Gravel pad or concrete pad?
I'm not sure Rich had in mind for that.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Did Rich plan a point of concrete slab, the shed is on gravel.
I knew it's on gravel, but I'm not.
This was something that he did, he ordered, talked about before I was involved, so I don't have a detail for that. If it makes a difference, I, I think he'll comply, but we'd have to get back to you on exactly.
It's an interior space. Well, it's a, it's a proposed, what is it, twelve by?
I don't know the exact size, ten by sixteen.
Ten by sixteen detached shed.
And how big is the one that's coming down?
It's a little bit small, I don't have the dimension of it, but it looks like it's about ten by ten, ten by twelve.
It's getting further away from the wetland, the existing shed is almost on the wetland.
Yeah.
And then.
You can see that the wetland goes around it probably, because when they put it in, they compacted the soil and changed, you know, degraded a little bit and changed it, so you can see the wetland area probably would have gone there.
And the footing and roof drains that are proposing to discharge to the rear of the property in an off-site water course, that, that line is cutting through the delineated wetland. It is, it does appear to be one area, but it meets the definition of one, but there's a small segment of that pipe that goes through.
That's here, the pipe, we were proposing to put the pipe here. We could offset the pipe to go around this area, but it would make it more likely to clog, we'd have to put a, you know, cleanout or something there, and I'd prefer to go through here, at least cutting just the corner. And I hope that'll be acceptable, but if you, if you insist, we can, we can get there another way, but from an engineering perspective, we would like to have this nice straight shot, so that drains.
Where we have to demonstrate that you have rights to discharge to the offset location.
We did do some research on the easement, it is an easement that, you know, exists here for drainage and here in favor of, I presume the town, but we did, we were unable to find a, the deed refers to the subdivision map, and there's no scheduling description on the deed, there's just a reference to the map. We looked at the map, and it has the easements.
Has the dimensions, but.
But there's no description of how the easement's to be used, whether or not it can be used by the adjoining neighbors. I'm not exactly sure how, I mean, there may be in the planning board resolution at the time, some discussion of that. But I'm an architect, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to me that if this drainage easement here and flowing this way is to allow this water to come out of here, that allowing us to come to the edge of this property and dump into that drainage easement shouldn't be a big issue, but I understand. Under normal circumstances.
There's a pipe going on somebody else's property, to make sure they have rights to do that.
Right.
When was the subdivision approved?
I don't know the date, I'm sorry. So sometime part of that, probably in the late fifties, early sixties.
It might be somewhere, so is there a way to do?
Possibly on the plat.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Presumably there's a, there is a, the map, I think, refers to a plan, a date for a planning resolution. So I suppose we could get that from the town archives as to what exactly is written there. That may give us some indication, but the difficulty for us is that otherwise, what we have to do is go across to here, because we're allowed, well, this is on our property, we could go here, we could go all the way to there, but it's dropping this way. So we have a better shot to go from here to here to get that pipe in, even though it's a longer distance, but the change in elevation is not favorable here to get this to work properly.
Well, in fact, Yan checked me from one, but if there weren't a pipe there, you would all be sheet flow, and it would eventually flow off the. and it would eventually flow off the property to that stream.
Yeah, but there's going to be a physical improvement on somebody else's property.
I understand, but what about possibility of a bio retention area and, and letting that water?
It's just, I mean, I would imagine that that pipe's going to be, it's beneficial to discharge it where they're proposing, because there's
I understand.
of how that pipe's going to daylight into the stream channel, right? So the biofiltration's going to be on the, on the surface. That pipe might be three or four feet down by the time it makes that one across the yard.
But what about it with a velocity dissipator, I mean, so that, because the water probably enhances the stream to begin. So, I mean, but again, I understand there's a legal-ish step here, but in terms of.
Yeah, I have no issue with, with the proposal, it's just, I just want to make sure they have rights before.
Well, I, check me on this, if we stop the pipe three feet before the property line.
That's fine, if you have the issue there, but that pipe might be four feet under the ground, you know, how you're going to daylight it.
I don't, I don't know what it looks like back there, so that may not be practicable, so.
But I think, I think that would be, that's sort of similar to what I think Jerome was saying, is figure out how to make it into a, you know, a rain garden or something there, and let it continue to flow.
But as Jan points out, if it's four feet below grade, and, and what's happening is that on the neighbor's property, then there's a slope down, drops down, and it would daylight on the neighbor's property.
The pipe daylights in the middle of the stream channel. That's why it's, you know, otherwise it's.
So it's so far down, but I don't know, so.
And there, but there is an easement, and there is an expectation on the part of the, the neighbor that water from our property would end up on their property. Because that's how, how it flows, it flows in this direction.
Is that the neighbor's property there?
It's the, yeah, this is the neighbor's property, and the easement, which is described on the, on that subdivision map, comes here, goes this way, flows this way, and then goes on to the reservoir.
So you said on, on the bottom part, which I guess it maybe itself is, is on their property, the other is on the neighbor's property, is there a way you could actually talk to the neighbor and get them to give you a?
I think we've got to, it might rather be in place.
Yeah.
If you can't find an easement, I'm just kind of.
Yes, it's true, as I understand, it would be possible to make a negotiation with the neighbor that has to grant us an easement. I don't know the neighbors, I don't know what they want for that.
Right.
Typically, someone who's granting an easement wants compensation for it, and it seems onerous to us to have to.
Okay, no, no, I've.
Go through that process where they say, boy, we're going to do it for free, we love you guys, we don't care. It's still a kind of onerous process to go through. It means hiring an attorney who
Right.
at the moment, you know, it's me, and we're not an attorney here.
Right, no, but I'm, so.
One way or the other, you're going to have to figure.
We'll have to, we'll have to figure.
Figure it out. So.
We talked about that at the meeting, right?
Yes, we did, but.
And I'm, I'm not saying that's how you have to go, but the question, and, and maybe preferable to that would be to put it down to some, the property where you know you own it, or something else, I mean, so even if that's not ideal.
Could I suggest another thing?
Yes.
That, that, there's some calculation achievable as to how much, what the, what the flow rate is. Right? We, we know what area you've got, and based on a whatever rainfall characteristic. Because if I were the neighbor, I'd want to know whether, what was going to come out of that pipe? Was it going to run over the banks and, and affect my property, or is it slow enough, can you slow it enough to, you know, just have it go into the stream without any?
Right now, it's, right now, it's all getting there, the entire house and everything.
Right, right.
It's getting to that same location, it's working around the property. I have no issue with the water getting there, it's just they're constructing, they're going to put a pipe in somebody else's property.
Right, but that's, that's my point, that if you go to the neighbor, I, if I'm the neighbor, I want to know what the flow rate looks like, and will it be any, any more volume per?
Well, I guess we, we should clarify. When I first talked to Jan about this, we were talking about doing the footing drains only to there, and and we talked about having the, the roof drains come to splash box and onto the lawn. Is that still?
Your, your, your plan says roof leaders and.
Do I say that? I'm sorry, I need to do that. I think I did. It says new drain from existing and nude footing drains.
Footing drains only.
So that was my intention, because we had had this discussion about the fact that we, it would be very difficult to do typical stormwater mitigation here, because it's all wet. You can't put infiltrators into underground, because it's all wet.
It's wet, right.
So what I understood Jan to mean, and I, again, I could be mistaken as to what his intent was, was that the roof drains come to splash box and run across the lawn, and the water's dissipated that way. So that what, what we wanted to do was make sure we could drain the basement, and get the footing drains and keep the basement dry. So that was the only intention of this, so the flow rate from this should be extremely small.
Yeah, it's also unquantifiable, but.
It is quantifiable, yes.
No, it's unquant. Groundwater is not going to be quantifiable.
Okay, alright.
Are, why don't you see if you can discharge it back there without going to the adjacent property? And if, maybe you can, I don't know, take a look.
Okay.
But if not, then you're, like I said, it's a physical improvement on somebody else's property, you need to make sure that you have rights to, to make that progress.
Just, can I just say, can I say something online after?
Sure.
So, from, it's my understanding that the pipe is on our property, but the water flows down into a six-foot ditch east end, and the east end is, the other half of the east end is on their property, so our water flows there now. And I believe the pipe would be on our property, but the water would flow into the east end that's on that pipe.
The, the, the question, Barbara, is where does it daylight relative to our property? Because the easement is shown only on their property. Now, the swell may be partly on our property, so if, if we can determine that the slope comes down
Right.
on our property, and that we can bring that pipe out to daylight, and it ends before we get to the end of your property, then nobody's going to have a problem with it.
Right.
I don't think, I mean, you know, typically, we're not allowed to discharge, to change the discharge of water onto someone else's property.
Right.
So I don't know whether that would make a difference, but there is this town drainage easement there.
But right, right now, the pipe, just to clarify her point, the pipe is shown over your property line on the plans. If it was shown to, to discharge ahead of your property line, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Okay.
It's, the pipe is literally crossing.
It is, I, I, I showed it that way because I thought it needed to do that. We may be able to determine that it doesn't need to do that. And if I can, that would be good, but.
I can imagine this eroded, suddenly eroded, the drain, edge of the drain.
That's why we talked about velocity dissipation and channel, we had those same comments.
So.
Yeah. Aside from the clarification of the legality of whether or not this pipe is on somebody else's property, I would make a motion that we refer this for administrative approval henceforth.
And I just want to make sure that you would be comfortable with that, even, and, you know.
It would be subject to.
To this easement, and something obviously big that, that sort of becomes difficult, you can come back, you know, but yes. Okay, so that's a motion made?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, that, that was the best we could hope for out of this meeting, we really appreciate it. Jan had mentioned the possibility that might happen, and we're very, very grateful that you did that. It saves us a lot of time and effort, thank you.
The wetland portion isn't the hard part at this point, the, it's the, it's the easement, I mean, and if you, you know.
Well, we do have another option, I mean, we, we can get to here, but again, it's just the, the.
Yep, so you have options.
Pitch is not as great.
You can work on it with Jan. Happy to leave it in his capable hands, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
And thank you for explaining, I, I wasn't clear on the second, what was happening with the second story, and now that you say not extending there, that's great, thank you.
And I, I probably should have shown the second floor plan, that would have been helpful. In terms of doing the research on what the easement says, how do I go about doing that?
Oh.
Can I rely on you to look at that?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll begin by taking a look at what we have here, and what's on file with the county clerk's office.
Okay.
And then I'll reach out to you either directly or through you.
Thank you very much, because, we, we can start doing that research too, but I'm sure you'd do a better job than I would have, thank you.
Okay, and good luck to your husband.
Thank you.
Tell him that the end is in sight at some point, it's a long road.
It's true for all of us.
Okay, so moving on to our next matter on the calendar, calendar number forty-seven dash twenty-one W P, calendar number oh nine dash twenty-one S W. The Beresford Residence, which is on Silver Spring Road in South Salem, New York. This is the application for construction of a single-family house on what is currently vacant land.
Hi, Jan, maybe some introductions.
Sure.
I'm Dave Beresford. This is a quality so wetland ass consultant, and Rob, you see, are the engineer.
Great, hello.
Good evening. Thanks for the introduction. But Rob, Rob is handing out, first and foremost, there was a comment that the wetlands report wasn't submitted as part of the application. There's four copies there.
Okay.
You can read those later. There's also photographs taken from the wetlands report, which Rob can hand out. It'll help. These are the photos.
Okay.
And also with that are the four copies of the New York State D E C sign-off on the wetlands. So, just.
Okay, and, and all of those should also be PDFs to Kirsten, right?
Do you want these now, members?
Might as well.
Paul, are you able to submit PDFs to us if you have any issue? Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll call my, my son to do it for me. That slide won't come, no, I'm just kidding, I'm learning. But for the record, my name's Paul Janik, wetlands consultant on the project, and Rob Rizelli, the engineer on the project. This is a, just to give you an overview, it's a two-point-four acre parcel, undeveloped property. It's at the southeast corner of the town of Lewisville, so we're pretty far down, almost into Connecticut. It's a flag-shaped lot, in that it flag-shaped lot, it comes off of the east side of Silver Spring Road. And comes a few hundred feet along, on that first photograph there. You can see the common drive, it's a gravel drive. A few hundred feet in off the common drive, it splits to one residence, existing residence. And then, there's actually a gravel drive that comes to this point where my ruler is a hundred and twenty feet into the property, and it's almost at grade. So, from, from this point out to the road, it's, it's almost dead flat. The shape of the property, once you get into the main flag portion of it, is, is just like Achilles' shield, it's, it's very domical. This is kind of the high spot of it. And most of the land slopes in that direction, that direction, and that direction. So the house is sit, proposed house is situated kind of near the elevation high. The slopes on the site are gently sloped. It's almost level up near the high point, so it's very, very gentle to parry for the most part. It's entirely wooded, once you get into the main portion, except where the cutout is of the existing gravel drive. The woods are fairly open, except as you get down over here, it's an awful lot more, it's the understory, kind of thick in some places.
Nice.
Alright, but for the most part, it's open beach, oak, black birch, you can walk around pretty easily. A lot of boulders, like big boulders sitting there on the ground. But the, the deep test holes that were taken, we found sufficient well-drained soil for a septic system. So, coming into the site, this portion where there's a slight grade as shown in the profile, we're going to pave that up to the house. So this portion is going to remain as is, this portion is going to be proposed to be paved up to the house.
And that is because of the slope?
Is it, it, it starts to rise.
Okay.
And, and it's really more of a maintenance issue.
Yep.
It's not super steep, it's less than fifteen percent. But it's, it's less of a maintenance hassle. That's the rationale for it. The other thing that we're going to do, if you look at this very carefully, you'll see that the existing gravel drive actually clips the neighbor's property. There's a house that fronts over here on Silver Spring Road. And it just clips it, so one of the things we're going to be doing is tweaking it over. The grades really won't have to change, it's just shifting it over a few feet, no more than that.
Okay.
Is that where the culvert place is? Uh, no, sir, I'll, I'll just get into that. And we have wetlands on the property, and I have shaded in chartreuse green are wetland areas. We identified three basic wetland areas. This is a very large wetland that extends a number of acres, it's D E C twenty-six, D twenty-six. And it is, extends to the north and to the east. And it actually goes onto this fellow property, almost in line with the man-made pond. Now, the gravel drive was built, and then segmented this, so this original wetland probably went through like this. But now there's a, there's a culvert that brings drainage under the road into this pond. Pond here. Some wetlands around it. There's a house literally right here. I, I have photographs selected that show the common drive, the gravel drive going into the site. Kind of, the third photograph is kind of a good idea with the woods look like, where the house might go. And, and then some shots of the little man-made ponds, so you get an idea where you're at. So I have a shot of this pond, that pond, maybe a shot, the woods are up there, and this area roughly where the house might go. And then the drives come in. What we propose is a four-bedroom house with service by a well, shown here, proposed well. Which disposal area, this being, I've shaded it brown. This will be our primary field. And we have an expansion area located over here. Now, we have a Board of Health approval on, on, on this, and I believe Rob had copies to hand out. So we have a Health Department approval, so there was a comment about, you know, switching the primary and the well, it's not my call. In fact, God can't even make that decision, it's only the Board of Health, so we, it would have to be run by them, but I will say, I wasn't privy to the conversations and the process, but typically, when the Health Department calls out as that being the primary area, that's probably the best place to have it from a soils point of view. And that's, that's their professional call also. The secondary, in case this were ever failed, is a little less desirable, and that's why the primary is usually the best place to have it.
Well, I.
If I could, I mean, I spent two years working on this, and I, I had a custom-designed house for, for that site. And you want to design it so that you have the most privacy, and I want to, I like my neighborhood, I want to keep it that way. And if you put the primary over where you're, you're suggesting, you have to cut down twice as many trees.
Yeah.
And I'd be looking right into his backyard risk pool.
It would be more exposed, so.
That, that, the expansion area is outside of the buffer, where the primary is in the buffer. And I, I bring it up because the code specifically states that septic systems in, in the buffer are completely undesirable.
Right.
So if there's any.
Sure, okay.
If there's any potential for that septic system to be outside of the buffer, I think the Board has to evaluate that.
I, I would agree.
The fact that you went to the Health Department before you went to the planning board, it's not our fault, and I, I don't think that it's a fair assessment to say that just because it was approved there, not the other place, doesn't mean it's not feasible there, or that's a better.
Oh, no, I, I, all I'm saying is that we can't, we, we can't make that.
It doesn't mean that the Health Department would have approved it the other way. It was presented that way, so it was approved that way.
Right, and I, I will say, and on that note, you know, one of the things about is this is all outside of the hundred-foot set. all outside of the 100-foot setback, and it's the 50-foot setback that puts us in proverbial doghouse.
Well, you're in the 150, the town's wetland buffer, you're outside the state buffer, but you're in the town's buffer.
Right.
So, which, our code is trying to push the septic systems outside of the buffer entirely, and it looks like you could potentially do that if you flip the system.
Yeah, I mean, I would also, I don't know where the neighboring wells and/or septics are, but, you know, that well.
All right, here's the neighbor's well, right, where it went.
Yeah, but, but, so, the well, where the well is, looks like it's in a place that would also be further out of the buffer.
This well.
That well, your well. And so, is there a way to say, maybe put the, I mean, I hear what you're saying about, it's a buffer from your neighbor now, but maybe there's a way to move, I, I am, again, trying to look at, are there alternative locations where the septic fields would be, you know, could be placed as much as possible out of the buffer? And so, I'm saying, maybe the well could be further somewhere down along the driveway, and you could put a septic up there. It's something we have to look at because of our goal.
That's fine, and Rob will be happy to take a look at that.
Okay.
All I'm saying is that this was approved by the Health Department.
Right, and I, and I.
And for me to say anything about changing it, it would have to be run by the Health Department.
Exactly.
But I will say one thing, you know, you've got elevation issues, so remember, this is, you know, if we start, if we start wanting to put a well down here, there might be an awful lot of, you know, we have to have separation distance from septic and well.
I, I know exactly that.
So, there's, there's a study that would have to be done to see if that's even possible. But I do appreciate what Dave's saying here about neighbors' privacy. If we, if we elect not to do the, you know, stick with this, you know, this wouldn't be cleared until, if somewhere in the future there was.
But that, that might not have to be cleared, and it's in the, in the wetland buffer. I mean, we're, the whole idea.
Well, but I, I'm, I'm just backing up with, with, with the, the owner, his rationale for not, not wanting to go this route.
Right.
It's not the Health Department.
And it's just, we have to.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to ask for, we have to look at, are there other places that make, make it better according to the code that we have to, that we, we comply with by being on this board?
To preach and to require.
Okay, good.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, all right?
Yeah, the other thing that I wanted to highlight on here was, in orange is our silt fencing, erosion control. So, this is basically our area of disturbance, if you will. Okay? And stockpile area, if you have to do any excavation, which we will be here. And the profile cross-section of both driveway shown here. Rob, you talked about the. Are there no modifications to the existing portion of the driveway outside there?
Tweaking it?
Yeah, there's, you're not resurfacing it or anything, it's definitely to be discarded.
I, I would say, just, just to take it, potholes, I mean, there's, there's a York rake type of, just, just like you would do in a highway department, just to take out any potholes, but actually, it's in bad shape, as it is.
I mean, depending on what you, you do there, it might need to be included in your, in its disturbance.
Okay, okay, got it. And we're proposing mitigation to offset our, our proposed disturbance. And on our second sheet, you brought in that other sheet there. You've got a full-size drawing, correct?
They already have these, right?
Yeah.
This one?
Do they have this? This is just an 11 by 17 production of this plan, but you already have this. So, for the area of disturbance that we're proposing, which I outlined here, this is taken from our site plan, this is just a graphic, we have calculations over here on mitigation and disturbance. And then, this is our proposed mitigation area. And we have just a little bit more in area calculated of mitigation than what we're disturbing. And the areas that we're proposing for mitigation are going to be primarily on the, of the flag portion here, this western portion of our, of our, the main body of our site. And what I've shown over here is what it's like right now. This is the existing conditions, so we're just taking a look at the mitigation. And what I've shown on this is the, the 100-foot, 150-foot, and then all these little circles are existing trees, which are on the tree plant, okay? And so, we're proposing mitigation both in the buffer and in the wetland, and it's going to consist primarily of trees, shrubs, and ground covers in the upland, and primarily shrubs and herbaceous in the wetland, because we already have, if you look at those photos, it, it's a wetland that has a thin tree canopy. The understory is pretty open, so it'd be basically beefing up, if you will, the understory. That's, that's our plan. And regarding wetlands, we have, I think I mentioned. Let's go back to this just for a second. So, we had the state come out and verify the state wetlands, and the state wetlands are this area right here, and this one. There's a tiny little wetland that's right where the driveway splits, shown here. That's not regulated by the state, but it's a, a town wetland.
Okay.
So, I wanted to make that, clarify that in case.
Right, so, one of the comments that I think Jan made was that there's an awful lot going on, on one plant, and I would agree with that.
On, on the, on the site plan?
I'm having, yeah, because there's like green lines and blue lines, and on the neighboring property, and I, I.
I won't disagree with you, because that's why I highlighted it for tonight. It, it, you're, you're quite right, it will, it has to be cleaned up a little, less busy. Now, all the information's there.
A couple, a couple of separate things, so it's easier to see.
I think the attempt was to try to get it all consolidated just for paperwork, but you lose, you, you gain one thing.
Right.
And you lose something else, so.
No, that's fine, we, we can certainly take care of that.
Because I, because I have to say, I was pretty confused on.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the survey, are you finished?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at the survey, this drawing, and maybe I missed something in the introduction, but it looks like the drive, it's a shared driveway, and it begins on neighboring property, and then crosses over onto your flag lot, is that right?
Well, yes, yeah, I mean, it's.
Just the traveled way? Wondering about course, course easements, is that, is that all in place? I think it's always the same situation. It doesn't look that way. Looks healthy, but at the beginning, at the head of the driveway, the entire traveled way is on the neighboring property, not on the center. Unless there's, well, mistake here.
Well, well, what, what the survey shows is what it shows, but the, the, in the, I think in the D, there must be rights of indias and egres for the properties. That's just not depicted on here.
Right, I mean, I think.
Okay, well. But that's a, you know, it's a valid point. I think, I think we had a copy of the D.
I received one yesterday.
Yeah, so somewhere buried in that would be something that would clarify that. But, but we're not going to change anything, we're, we're following the right portions. Proposed mitigation is depicted over here, and the details of it, and I don't want to bore you, but it's color-coded, but you've got your trees, your shrubs, herbaceous, and any seed mixes we're proposing. And the heights, the sizes, and the quantities are shown in this table. And if you wanted to see this over here, you'd find it over here, that's a centipern, so it's color-coded.
Right, we got it.
And the other part of our mitigation is, is compensation for our increased runoff generated by proposed residents. There's two things we have. One is our dry, two, two drywells. The drywells are shown here, and one here. The drywells will take stormwater runoff from the roof and split it some half here and half there. For the, for a section of paved driveway we're going to have, we've elected to handle any runoff generated by that with these small rain gardens, which are shown here, and details here in this blow-up. Here's the grading plan for the rain garden, and here's the planting scheme for the rain garden. Yeah. Here's the table for the calculations on, on the rain gardens, which is basically a six-inch storm event for that area, and then.
So, I think a lot of those details, I mean, I think some of our, our bigger questions really end up being on, well, on some of the, the placement. Maybe I will ask Jan to go through your memo a little bit?
Awesome.
And.
Just one comment going back to the issue of buffering with the neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
You made a statement before about there being no understory, you know, obviously deer are browsing all at, at most properties.
Well, no, it, but I also said that there's places where there's a lot of multi, mountain law, so.
Okay.
I, I, the, the understory was up where the house is, it, it's fairly open there.
Well, that's why I'm bringing that up, I heard that stated, and it would seem to me that the argument for maintaining a buffer, rather than getting a septic out of the wetlands buffer, is not that, that strong, in that these are all deciduous, and in the wintertime, you know, when things are pretty open, you might be better off planting some nice evergreen, a real evergreen buffer in that area, and, and satisfying the requirement for getting the septic out of the buffer, you know.
So, we'll, we'll talk to the Health Department about this, flipping them around.
You have to walk this site depreciated, you have an area you're going to use that year.
So, I mean, maybe, well, we'll talk about that after Jan goes through the memo, but maybe a sidewalk would be appropriate.
Yeah.
So, the, the permits that are required are, obviously, the wetland and stormwater permits from the planning board, Health Department approval, DEC, Article 25, first order wetland permit, and for some reason disturbances exceed an acre, which I don't think they will, speedy straddle permit. We're outside of New York City watershed, so there's no state involvement on the stormwater, and so, you hit the one acre threshold, which I don't foresee happening here, right? The application should be referred to the Building Inspector for zoning conformance review. We'd ask for a separate existing condition survey, and so by Los Angeles Science of there. To your point regarding the clarity, maybe dropping the scale to one inch equals 20, and providing several sheets to improve just the readability of the plans. The wetland, again, the, the wetland boundary line, just making it more pronounced. Reduce, we made a couple of recommendations as we discussed this evening. One, in order to reduce the amount of disturbance within the wetland buffer, look like the house could slide just a matter of feet to keep that corner of the house outside of the wetland buffer. You potentially look at reducing the number of bedrooms to reduce the size of the septic system, and also flipping this, the primary and the expansion areas to, to move the primary system outside of the buffer, which clearly our wetland ordinance encourages. We asked for the wetland report, which we received this evening, ensure it's in good order. Those good work. The DEC wetland map we received this evening, that's complete. Just locations of utilities, any sort of trenching, AC condensers, generators, propane tanks, all that must be illustrated on the plan. Any walls over four feet need to be certified and designed.
Many walls over.
You had a detail on the plan, but I'm not, couldn't tell whether there was, that was going to be over four feet or not.
Yeah, I'll take care of that, it's fine.
The Health Department approval, we should take a look at those plans, obviously, they may change based on our conversation, but did those plans also show the stormwater, and, you know, did you meet all those separation distance requirements? The stormwater management system, we needed a little bit more information about its design, and as for soil testing and just demonstrating compliance with the local and state design manuals. I think that's, that's really the crux of the comments, we have, you know, a couple odds and ends, but those are really the main ones. We also received tonight's floor plans and elevations from Udamasi, so that's, the comments been satisfied. Mainly those, trying to reduce the impact to the wetland buffer, and I think that could be done a few different ways.
Yeah, so, what do you think about taking a sidewalk for this, to take a look at this? Okay, so typically, well, typically, we haven't done a lot of this for a while, but typically, what, what we used to do is a sidewalk the Saturday before the next meeting, so that we could report on it at the next meeting with that in mind. So, that, I believe, would be August, the next meeting is August 17th, so that would be, I think, August 14th, if I've got my, my mind right. Would that be possible for us to come out and take a look at?
I'd be happy to do that.
Great.
Yeah, not a problem. We'll, we'll mark out where the house is, too.
Perfect, okay. And, and it's possible that, now I realize it's a shared driveway, so we will want to pull in on the gravel, and we can get beyond the other person's.
Well, you won't have any problem, really. How many cars do you think you'll have?
Typically, if, if there's five of us that show up, and, and maybe a CAC member, you know.
Well, you won't have five or six cars.
Yeah.
Five or six cars could actually park there, and there, I honestly, I, there's not a lot of traffic around there.
No, I just, yeah.
So, I wouldn't worry.
Well, just trying to figure, should, should we park out on Silver's?
I wouldn't.
No, okay, so pull into the driveway.
I would come right in.
Outside, there's a place to pull over there.
Yeah, if you need to, but you don't have to.
Okay, I would, I just want to, I mean, because that makes it a little easier to just figure out what we're doing. Okay, nine o'clock in the morning? We're going to want to go to Freeze, too. August 14th, what?
14.
14.
Is that, that's a Saturday.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Okay.
It's lucky dog. Saturday.
Uh-oh. Okay, so I think that will help us, because you clearly have put a lot of thought into exactly where the house wants to go, on the top of a knoll, and it would, I think it will help us to see all this stuff, and.
I designed it so I have my workshop in the back, so it wouldn't disturb Frank, you know, when I'm doing the foreplay, I'm going, oh, you don't want me working in the front of your house and looking at your neighbor while he's trying to enjoy his pool.
So, yeah, so I understand that you've done that, and I think it would help us to take a look at it, and, and get a sense of what you've done here. Okay. Anything else that we need to talk about?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jerome, referring building inspector.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh. Yes, do we want to refer this to the building inspector?
Yes.
Yes.
Make motion to.
No, you, you don't need a motion, you need consensus, so I think we have.
The new stuff we're going to keep.
Yeah. Refer to the building inspector.
Yeah. Okay, so we just did that by consensus here, a little conversation.
Also, it's not, of a chance.
Thanks. Okay.
You can shift it just a little, we're talking feet, feet, yeah, that's a, so.
So, the next item on our agenda.
No, no, we don't want it to change. See you Saturday.
Yeah, well, in a few weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So, the next item on our agenda is actually calendar number 11-21SW, with 22 Woodway LLC residents. They have withdrawn their application, and will just resubmit the prior storm, prior plans for stormwater approval. So, that is all we need to do there. The next item on our agenda was to schedule a site visit for calendar number 28-28. The next item on our agenda was to schedule a site visit for calendar number 28-21WP, calendar number 04-21SW, the Freeze residence. This is at 54 Bishop Park Road in Pound Ridge, New York. And I would recommend that we would plan to go there at the end of our visit to the Bearsford residence. So that might be 9:30, 9:45. I don't know how far apart the two are. They're still at the same general, general corner, but they're not real close. So can you, can maybe variable like that, expect us between 9:30 and 9:45? Probably more than 9:45 if it's a drive.
Yeah.
9:45.
Okay.
It's just on the other side of 9:23.
Yeah. But, okay. And the next item on the agenda is a request for a wetland bond reduction. This is calendar number 08-02PB for JBG Estates, which was the former Popoli subdivision at 1437 Route 35.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Beardo Dimitri with JBG Estates.
Good.
We're requesting a wetland bond reduction after one year survival search of 50%.
And I understand, Jan, you have gone and.
Yep, inspected it myself a few weeks ago, and it looked to me like there are 90, 95% viability. I've done some replanting a couple of years ago, and I think that did a good job and it took. So absolutely no issues with the proposed request. Everything's in good shape out there. It's coming along very nicely.
Okay, and we did get a a proposal, a resolution that Jeff drafted and was circulated. So I don't know if there's any other comments, questions?
My only, just to remind the board, because this process always poses the same question. This is a, this is a wetland mitigation bond that the board imposed under the wetland, under its wetland authorities, so it doesn't require town board, any type of town board involvement. It's simply wetland plantings. The specific condition that we're talking about have gone through several iterations through the succession of resolutions. The most current being the one adopted in April 2017, set the amount, required it to be posted really in the form of just money's held by the town, that's done. And as Jan stated, we've hit the first threshold of one year survival. That, that is sufficient to, you know, to support the 50% reduction requested. Which is what the resolution does.
Okay, so. Does anybody have any questions about the resolution? So let's look for a motion.
I assume.
Okay. Perfect. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too. Okay, let me just have that whole thing back to. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion of the town boards. I believe this is the second thing we have looked, time we have looked at, the amendment of Section 220-43.7, amending the town code to provide special use permit provisions for the gasoline service stations. And this amendment that we have been given, so the first one had a mile distance between them. That was withdrawn. This one retains the 200 foot distance, but it does say that in order to be a gas station approved in this, or that basically prohibited after, if not already permitted by July 15th, 2021. So it has been referred to us to, to comment on. We, we do owe response back to the town board despite the fact that we still have a open application in front of us. And so I would like to look for comments from the board that we would incorporate in a memo that, to get back to the town board because they do, they will try to vote on this relatively quickly. So. I will start with my comments perhaps. I mean. Well, I should let, I should let, as chair, I should let other people talk before I poison the well.
I don't think so, Janet. This is a moratorium wrapped in legislation.
You could take a minute as well.
This. It seems to, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, the way I'm reading it, is you cannot have any gas stations at all as of July 15, 2021, or whatever date they passed it. I think that is an arbitrary date. It's an arbitrary law. I do not think that one can prohibit without some kind of empirical evidence that it needs prohibiting. I'm not really understanding the purpose of the law either. I guess that runs to the arbitrariness of it. There is, there was a, there is a legislative purpose and intent. However, it is so general as to make it not viable. They did not specify where the problem exists, or if in fact it exists at all. They did not take into account of why the why gas stations should not be near either schools or churches. Well, those are my major issues.
Well, yeah, I'm in agreement with Charlene, and specifically, it seems to me that the danger, if there are any of, from gas stations, exists primarily with existing gas stations, who perhaps don't comply with new safety standards for tank burial and automatic, you know, shut offs and things of that nature. Whereas a new gas station would have to comply with those. So, you know, I think sort of targeting the wrong problem, if it's a problem. And I think it's a knee jerk reaction to that, perhaps some of the constituents of the town board members who feel that they don't want any further gas stations. And so, but I don't think we can regulate that, those kinds of uses through political means. I think it has to be through legal planning and zoning regulations. And from that point of view, I do think it's not only arbitrary, but a bit capricious in the part of the town to make that prohibition.
So. I would agree. I mean, so I think, just to be clear, I am opposed to this change. And I think that's what the letter from the planning board should say, is that we are, as a group, opposed to this change. I would agree that it's arbitrary, does not seem to be guided by any reference to any comp plans, even though our current master plan is pretty old. It is a master plan. It does talk about hamlets. It, and it does talk about uses. Like other members of the board, I'm not clear on the rationale. It seems reactive, especially in light of the prior plan that was apparently discarded. So it seems like it's a, an attempt to react to a situation rather than to plan what would be good for this town in light of comments that I think we've all seen that said it might make sense to have a a gas station in Golden's Bridge. So my concern is that it, the law might be changed to say not as of this date, and then changed, I don't know, in a future period to say, oh, it's okay again. And that is, it doesn't seem to have a rationale to stop building them or to start building them again. So I, I would like agreement from the board to send a letter to have, ask Judd with his clear writing again, to.
You've, all three have dictated it for me. You all articulated the, you know, your concerns and and observations quite well.
And I think we're in agreement that we're all opposed.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. May I ask, was a, maybe no one knows here, was a moratorium suggested prior to this law?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it seems that that would be more that would be something that
Right.
that could be looked at, in fact, that.
I don't want to, I don't want to jump ahead, but obviously, I think as the as the, as the cop plan process that is now occurring begins to really take shape and moves towards some real definitive conclusions. Still away from that. I think at that time, the town board may want to consider, you know, a temporary moratorium. You know, in the event that there are, there's a prospect of having things come into fruition that might be in conflict with the cop plan, or not there yet. But I, with regard to this, I'm unaware of it. Like you, I received the, Kirsten, we received the revised amendment that's before us tonight, right on the heels of considering the one mile proposal. And at first glance, I was trying to figure out what what the difference was until I set it down, you know, caught it, obviously. So, no, the answer is.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, and I'll just point out, not that they've made formal application, but there there is a potential proposed gas station in Golden's Bridge that has had pre-applications with our office. So I would imagine that they'd be quite interested in.
Is that part of precision motors?
Yeah.
Has it been submitted?
It hasn't been submitted, but there's been, you know, pre-application meetings. They have retained engineers and such. Obviously, it would be affected by the proposal.
Right, so, I mean, that's, that's part of what makes me fear that this is an off switch or, you know, something that, that we don't, we don't want to implement without some thought. I mean, because this would be a townwide, a townwide hall. Prohibition, right. So, so let's, I think last time we circulated a draft for comma, you know, before sending it. I don't know whether you want to do that again or just have it done and write it, because I know there's been some.
I would be fine with just writing it. I mean, I think Judd has all the information he needs, and it's definitively in opposition, and at least in my mind.
Yeah, there's no way we do it.
Okay. You've got.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I need a motion. You need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion. Also, I need.
Authorizing you.
Authorizing you to sign the letter that.
Right. Expresses the board's.
To the board, to the town board.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next thing I wanted to just mention, and it's sort of funny because we got these papers today, is that at the beginning of the, of this whole change of procedures in March of 2020, one of the things we said was, okay, let's allow people to only give us four copies, only give Kirsten four copies, and we'll do things with PDF. And I have to say, I struggled until I bought a, you know, a tablet that I could make things grow and stuff. I want to know whether people want to go back, whether we should make that four copies sort of our permanent process? Or whether anybody wants a paper copy back?
I would say, keep the four copy of regulation. I'm perfectly happy with.
But if you, I mean, if somebody wants one, we can say, okay, we want five.
Janet, I like having paper copies, but I'm moving into the future. I'm going to push myself into the future.
I was, I was the one, one of the ones who wanted it big in the past, and I've kind of like finally gotten there, so I'm okay. So.
Me too.
We will, of course, ask Greg and Maureen was very clear, never send me another piece of paper again. But.
We haven't got this electronic.
I checked my computer.
No, they said they would send it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if you're going to put it on the Dropbox, I just.
Great, I can give you a job.
Yeah, I think we'll do that. Okay, so is that, so you have what you need to be able to tell future applicants, we only need four, it wasn't just temporary, now that's our rule. Okay.
Update the town website.
Yep, perfect.
I'd like to move that we approved minutes of last meeting as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, our next meeting date is August 17th, 2021, and I guess I would look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.